Recommend approval, subject to the conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here to speak in favor? We're just going to ask that you please approach the podium. Give us your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Joey Wong. I'm the owner of Great Lakes Honda at 43 Pruitt Boulevard in Akron, Ohio. Yes, we would move forward with doing what has been asked of us on the recommendation of the landscaping, the fencing plan, and also the stormwater management plan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? And before you testify, we're going to actually have you to be sworn in by one of our members of the law department, okay?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Bart Oldenburg, 1383 Astor. I had not planned on speaking, that's why I didn't do it before, but as one of the gentleman's customers, I can attest to the fact that they really need the space. Whenever somebody pulls in there, it's not quite dangerous, but there's no doubt in my mind, as a 20-year resident of the area and a customer of that facility even before this gentleman took it over, they need the space. They're quiet. I don't see where anything, any noise would be created by that organization. So, as a customer, I would speak in favor of it, having in fact just been there today for service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against? Anyone here that would like to speak against? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Mobian, Kammer, Neil, Swirsky?
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. There's five conditions in which the owner and their representatives have agreed to conform to the terms of this conditional use request. I know that the planning department, the planning commission, recommend approval, and according to Mr. Antonucci, the ward council persons in favor of this, so we recommend approval this evening.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And we have one abstention, correct? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky. Mr. Neil abstains. Okay. Public hearing number two. It's a legal notice. It's hereby given. The following public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, June 10th, 2019 during a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM in Akron City Council, 166 South High Street, on an ordinance authorizing conditional use to establish a daycare business center at 1335 Waterloo Road.
Ms. James Nucci?
Madam President, members of council, Marion Anderson is requesting permission to establish a child daycare business center at this location. The proposed daycare center, also known as Just Like Home, would be located on the main floor of the 1,282-square-foot ranch-style home. The facility would provide services and activities for up to 12 children. The hours of operation would be Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and on weekends from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Petitioner currently has two employees on an as-needed basis and plans on hiring an additional two. The proposed use should not be intrusive to the neighborhood, as the site is currently used as a type B daycare home, and the majority of the activities are conducted indoors. Since the children are dropped off and picked up at various times of the day, traffic congestion should not be an issue. Providing quality daycare services is beneficial to the entire city, and as such, planning staff supports the request. Both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance?
My name is Lawrence Anderson. Marion is my wife. If we were able to get the zoning, we'd be able to get more kids there, and that means that the parents will be able to go to work without having to worry about their kids, and know they'll be well taken care of. We have been doing this for 15 years, and we love kids, and we would like to continue doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
Excuse me, I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report with suspension of the rules. Mobian, Kammer, Neil, Swirsky?
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you, President Somerville. I did have a conversation with the ward council person on this particular conditional use request. The owners have agreed to conform with the conditions that have been put forth through the planning committee, or excuse me, the planning department for the city of Akron. There was some question, referenced the alley. That has been resolved, and that's included in this conditional use language to that. So, with that, we recommend approval this evening.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky. Public hearing number three. Notice hereby given, a public hearing will be held by the council of the city of Akron on Monday, June 10th, 2019 during a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM, Akron City Council, 166 South High Street, on an ordinance authorizing a conditional use to establish a child daycare center business at 480 Lover's Lane.
Ms. James Nucci?
Madam President, members of council, Dimitri McCall is requesting permission to establish a child daycare business center at this location. Proposed daycare center, also known as Small Giggles, would occupy portions of the main floor of this 960-square-foot dwelling. Facility would provide services and activities for up to 12 kids. Petitioner currently has one assistant and would add two more assistants if approved. Due to the needs and work schedules of parents, childcare services would be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Since the children are typically dropped off or picked up at varying hours, traffic congestion should not be an issue here. The zoning staff has not received any complaints about the current daycare home. Providing quality daycare services is beneficial to the entire city, and the planning staff supports the request. Both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here in the audience to speak in favor? Is there anyone here in the audience to speak against? Anyone here in the audience to speak against? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco?
I'd like to pull a committee for a favorable recommendation with suspension of the rules. Mobian, Kammer, Neil, Swirsky?
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. This is basically the same explanation, and I know that Ward Council Representative Samples is in support of this as well, and that, from what I understand, they've been doing this for some time and quite successful. So, we recommend approval this evening.
The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Councilman Fusco, it's your pleasure. On the rest of the agenda?
Yes, thank you. Time on four, five, and six.
Time will be granted on four, five, and six.
Yes. The report of the committee is favorable on item number seven, and we are requesting suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended. Any further comment?
Yeah, I don't know if that ward council representative would like to make comment, but in essence, what's happened is, is this is the property owner in the area of Astor Avenue within the business district has requested that this portion is approved by the city for historic purposes. This is, will then go on, I believe, to the state of Ohio and then possibly the federal government for approvals, but this is one of those steps. And hopefully, this is going to be a good addition in terms of this community historic significance. We recommend approval this evening.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. The recommendation on item number eight is for consent agenda?
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. And the report of the committee on item number nine is for suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. This is the 2019 Consolidated Action Plan, which includes these, these are basically applications and certifications for the community development block grant funding, home investment partnership in the emergency solutions grant program. Much of this goes to our partners in terms of the homeless and the continuum of care, and much of this goes toward demolition, toward a number of other community-type services that are provided. Fair Housing gets a portion of these funds. The Great Streets Initiative is going to be funded out of some of these funds, and so we're asking for approval this evening. The, this application is due on, I believe, Thursday of this week.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Councilman Fusco?
Thank you. The request of the committee is to file items 10, 11, and 12.
Items 10, 11, and 12 will be filed.
Time on the balance.
Time will be granted. Rules. Councilwoman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like time.
Time will be granted. We'll now move into budget and finance. And Councilwoman Keith?
Did you want to read in the first item, Mr. Clark?
I can, if you'd like.
I mean, I can, but...
Go ahead.
This is, item number one under budget and finance is a resolution amending ordinance 93-2019 to replace the Neighborhood Partnership Program with the Beyond the Table Grant Award Program and declaring an emergency. The committee is in agreement that we would like suspension of the rules with a favorable report.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. We can just vote on that now. We had a very robust conversation this afternoon.
The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and one abstention. Neil?
Okay.
Councilman Neil?
Seems like I abstained a lot. One was because I had a relationship, but on this one, I just want to explain why I abstained on this one. I feel since we've outlined this year's partnership dollars, putting in there the stipulation of equity being a piece of it, and I know we use that term a lot, but we've had constituents come down here, and we've proven that we have not been able to address equitable challenges. We've had folks come down here and request us to address the healthcare issue, to address the tow truck issue, to address economic issues. And I'm concerned that when we use these words, and we don't have a policy or a process on how to address them. And for something that is as important as this, Neighborhood Partnership Dollars do a great benefit to our community. I know in a lot of our communities, certain things wouldn't happen because there are no other dollars. But I'm concerned when we use words that we do not, have not taken the time as a council and as administration together to form an understanding of what it means when we talk about equity. It's nothing to play with. It's been, literally has been life and death for some people. And so for that is the reason why I abstained.
Thank you, Councilman Neil. Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Number two under budget and finance, this is an ordinance authorizing director of the Department of Neighborhood Assistance or his designee to enter into contracts with nonprofit neighborhood-based organizations for the provision of service and/or projects, including, among other things, neighborhood events, community gardens, beautification projects, after-school programs, and mentoring programs, authorizing payment thereof, reallocating funding, and declaring an emergency. The committee's report is favorable, and we're asking for suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
This will take the place of my neighborhood, our Akron, just have a new name with it, and also the amounts will be $1,000 to $8,000 per ward. Each ward will get $8,000, but one project may qualify for the $8,000.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one no.
Okay, roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Public service. Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Number one, I'm going to ask for time on all of them.
Okay.
Two, three, and four, with the equalization board will be meeting, and those will be addressed. Under number one, we had three sponsors of a resolution come this afternoon during committee meeting and speak with us, and I would hope that if we have any questions, we'll address those to the three speakers today, and hopefully, we will get a vote on this next week.
Okay, thank you so much. Parks and Rec, Councilman Neil?
Thank you, ma'am. Request that we just wait and file that item.
Okay. Item number one will be filed. We will now move into our new legislation.
Okay. Item number one offered by Fusco. Ordinance authorizing director of planning and urban development to file an application and to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio for the homeless crisis response program and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Item number two offered by Keith. Ordinance authorizing the purchasing agent or her designee without the formality of publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contract or contracts for pavement consulting services, including continued pavement inspection, analysis, and related management services with Pavement Management Group, PMG, and declaring emergency.
Councilwoman Keith?
Madam President, the committee would like this to be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Okay. Item number three offered by Keith. Ordinance authorizing director of public service or his designee without publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contract or contracts with Coleman Corporation for the purchase of a core-cut, walk-behind pavement saw and declaring emergency.
Councilwoman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee's report is favorable, and we are requesting suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing now, the rules have been suspended.
This item is an item that is used way too often, and there is a need. It's a necessity, and that is why we are requesting suspension of the rules.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Mobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky. Okay. Item number four offered by Keith. Ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of North Main Street between the termini of State Route 59 and Market Street and South Main Street between the termini of Market Street and Mill Street by paving, grading, constructing, reconstructing curbs, concrete sidewalks, driveway approaches, and utility vaults, installing street lighting, and planting trees and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Yes, Madam President. The committee would like this item to be placed on the consent agenda, and having said that, if I may, if we had not had the ability to acquire the Second Tiger Grant along with the work that our engineers have done to also secure a $2 million grant, this project would be costing the city a lot more than $5 million. So, we have acquired $10 million in assets to be able to push this through. And with that, I'm very proud to ask for this to be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Item number five offered by Sims. Ordinance approving the addition of the property located at 1554, 1558, 1572, and 1576, South Cleveland Madison Road in Copley Township to the Copley-Acron Joint Economic Development District, authorizing the mayor or his designee to amend the Copley-Acron Jet Agreement to include the properties located at 1554, 1558, 1572, and 1576, South Cleveland Madison Road and declaring emergency.
Councilwoman Sims?
Madam President, the committee's request is for consent.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda. We will now go to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period. If you wish to speak to council during this time, you may approach the podium. We're going to ask that you please sign in, give us your name and your address. You will have three minutes to speak to this body. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and remain in council business. Speakers should refrain from making any personal attacks. Anyone who breaches decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak during our public comment period?
Good evening, council. My name is Mary O'Connor. I live at 857 Princeton Street, and I have a statement to read into the record. Thank you. Early this morning, the Parisan's Building in Summit Lake burned beyond saving. It was immediately demolished. As I speak, it's a pile of bricks of what had once been a unique building with a unique story. Two years ago, this city-owned property was a viable structure. I was inside the building at least three times with different interested parties. It had challenges, to be sure, but I speak from 36 years of experience as an architect of successful, unlikely restorations, and as a Summit Lake community member for four years. It was structurally stable. It was dry. The roof was good, and the ground floor, with minimal investment, could have been put to use easily. What was needed was a leap of the imagination and the energy to put that imagination into action. Maybe it didn't exist two years ago, and maybe not today, but what are we waiting for? I'm not going to lament this building any longer. At some point, I recognized it was not going to survive. I speak today instead to urge the initiation of new ways of looking at the public bequest. I refer to the vast amount of property the city owns in Summit Lake and other areas. Why not have greater transparency and involvement instead of the murkiness of the current situation? There is an understandable atmosphere of mistrust between the community and the city about the plans for Summit Lake. Reimagining the Civic Commons has steered away through the suspicion to success in enhancing the remarkable public asset of Summit Lake. The loop around the lake is open to all because it belongs to all. While admittedly more complicated with buildings of a certain size, use, or condition, we need only look to the former Firestone Pump House presently undergoing conversion to a Metro Parks Nature Center to know that the new uses can happen in old buildings if we work together. If the will is there, the pump house conversion came out of the reimagining Civic Commons process. Joe Tucker of South Street Ministry started a forum to discuss city-owned property in Summit Lake. There's obviously a local interest in the subject. Let's use this forum to really generate new ideas. Ideas are free. Sometimes they change attitudes and possibilities because no one ever thought of that idea before. I've worked with Summit Lake Building Department on several projects. They're geared for new construction. We solicit them, involve them in the process, and come up with creative collaboration across departments and public-private initiatives.
You have about 30 seconds.
Finally, last weekend was Founder's Day. This annual event is a major source of revenue for the city of Akron. Brings 10,000 visitors to Akron. So, one more question regarding an invaluable asset cloaked in mystery is the Mayflower Hotel. This is a gem that should already be on the National Register for Historic Places, and I'd like to see there be more public involved in the process. I know it's a private developer, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. I'd be happy to speak with you after the meeting.
My name is Steve Noem. I live at 1928 Sixth Street, Kyoga Falls. I'd like to focus on restoration of affordable retiree spouses' health insurance coverage, but it seems like there's obstacles which prevent you from doing the right thing. Last Friday, while I was waiting at the Infusion Center at Soma's Cooper Cancer Center, I saw a sign inviting patients to take a survey so Soma can know where they're doing well and where some improvement is warranted. When I call Medical Mutual, I'm asked to take a survey afterwards. Questions like, were my concerns satisfactorily dealt with? Was their representative knowledgeable and helpful? And I'm given a range of one to five, with one being not satisfied to five being extremely satisfied. When I go to the store or go out to eat, nearly every receipt has a request to take a survey, and some offer an incentive to participate because it's important to them that their customers are satisfied, that they're doing the best they can to serve their customers' needs. If their customers aren't satisfied, they can go elsewhere. When I worked at the Health Department, I knew that I had to do the best job I could possibly do because the community didn't have other options regarding housing code enforcement, litter control, food service, and school inspections, and road and control. So it is with city councils. The city's citizens don't have another group to represent them, so it's important for council to give them the best service possible. Now, last week, council president expressed her satisfaction in having a group from a foreign country visit so they could see how local government works and how the public gets an opportunity to speak up and share their concerns with their government leaders. I chuckled to myself when you spoke because I don't think the foreign guests realize that council often merely endures the public comment segment and seldom adequately addresses the concerns presented to them. When questions are asked, requests made, a "thank you for your comments" is insufficient. Perhaps at the end of the three-minute presentation, the council president should summarize what the citizen's concern was and what action will be taken, so there's no confusion in what's going on. And perhaps a survey should be offered to all participants who might, which might say, do you feel your concerns were respectably received by council members? Did council members seem genuinely interested? Did council offer any direction, referral to other appropriate officials that might prove useful? Based on your experience, would you recommend addressing city council as a worthwhile effort in addressing community problems and concerns? I must admit that attending council for nearly one and two-thirds years and only hearing "thank you for your comments" has made me a whole lot less than satisfied. This is what I'm asking for now, is what I've asked for before. Please address the retiree spouse insurance crisis, perform an unbiased review of the city health insurance program as a whole, and determine what is a reasonable cost to both the city and its participants, both active and retired employees and their families.
Mr. Noem, I'd be more than happy to also speak with you after the meeting.
Good evening, council. My name is Harrington Hargrove. I live at 1008 Laurel Avenue, Ward Three. And I'm addressing this council about equity. There's been no equity in Ward Three. Forty years of redlining and discrimination, forty years. You could check by the planning department and economic development because you'll know where you spent the money. In Ward Three, economic... In Ward Three, economic development, zero. Councilwoman Somerville, we elected you to represent us. We haven't got anything, and you know that. You live in our ward. Forty years of redlining and discrimination. Where's the equity? As a developer, I've just tried to do work in my own community. I'm not asking to go on Main Street, but for forty years in Ward Three, I've been asking for economic development. And this council ignores it. The Guard Report, what have you done to advance our community? African-Americans been denied. What have you done? Where's your plan to uplift us? Where is it? I would like to have a copy of it if I can. I've asked this body, I'm, as a developer in my own community, I'm talking about creating fifteen to twenty jobs, but councils see, don't think it's worthy of nothing. Where's the equity at? Economic development and the black community. Forty years, and you can't find nothing to bring to our community? In our community, we have Opportunity Park, and it goes all the way to Main Street. But if you go west off of Dart Street in the Hub Zone One, that, by the federal government's own standard, we haven't received anything. Now, how can this body say you do your job and you won't do anything for the whole community? Forty years of Ward Three, Opportunity Park, Ohio Bell, First Merit, now it's the other bank took over. But anyway, forty years, and you can't bring anything to Ward Three? That's a disgrace. This council, some of you ought to resign.
Mr. Hargrove?
Yes, yes.
Please have a seat. Thank you so much. We've asked for no personal attacks.
That's personal? That's true.
I'm going to ask that you maintain order, or you will be removed from council chambers. Thank you.
Roger Pryor, eight eight five Springdale Street, and also Small Business in Ward Three, five five one West Thornton Street. I just have a couple of questions to ask, council. One, what does it cost to tear down a house? I noticed that a lot of homes are being torn down, for whatever reason. What does it cost? That's one question. The other question is, I'm thinking that some of those homes could be rehabbed. Why is the city selling property, whether it be one dollar, a hundred dollars, and there's different scales? Can anyone answer that question?
Yeah, Mr. Pryor, after the meeting, I'm sure there'll be some members of council that can answer that question for you, so just stick around, okay?
I will.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak during our public comment period? Anyone else that would like to speak during our public comment period? Seeing and hearing now, we will close our public comment period and move into our committee assignments. Rules, Councilwoman Keith. Budget and Finance, Councilwoman Keith. Planning, Councilman Fusco. Public Service, Councilwoman Keith. Public Utilities, Councilwoman Samples. Public Safety, Councilman Kammer. Parks and Rec, Councilman Neal. Housing, Councilwoman Samples. Health and Social Services, Councilwoman Amobian. Economic Development, Councilwoman Sims. Green Committee, Councilman Swersky.
One, uh, no, twelve thirty.
Is there anything else coming before council? We get a motion, we have a motion in a second to excuse Councilman Freeman and Councilman Kilby. All in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. Councilman Neal?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to stand and give explanation because a comment was made, and it relates to why I abstain from our minutes. And it's because I, I take serious when our colleagues, our constituents, come down and they share their concerns. And being a member of council, knowing that we don't come together to at least discuss them. I know we're in labor negotiations, and so something's being discussed about healthcare with at least our employees. We still haven't gotten an update in regards to Mr. Gnome's request. And even if we just have to tell him no, but at least we'll know why we're telling him no, but just to not say anything, to ignore someone, you know, there's this term going around about being civil. Oh, we're being civil. We're sitting here, and we're talking. But each month, these families are paying a thousand dollars or more for healthcare while we do nothing to address the issue. And I think we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to those who gave thirty years of their lives to this city, to at least be able to give them an answer. And so, the reason why I abstain from the minutes is because one of the things I ask is that we keep a scorecard. Just when people come down here and ask us to address issues, either assign them to a, the reason why we have committees is so that committee could focus on it, or as we take time to caucus as council as a whole to address the issue. But how can we have a heart to have these people come down here and, and share their concerns, and we not come together to discuss them? I mean, it's been over a year or something. And we pledged when we looked at the healthcare issue to come back and, and look at it because we knew that, you know, there could be some things that we didn't understand. And so, to my colleagues on council, I mean, we have no excuse for not being able to at least come to an understanding of either yea or nay that we can't do these things. But to constantly ignore these folks that come down here time after time is wrong. And because we have not met, because we haven't made a formal statement, because we have not been briefed by those who have the information to brief us, I mean, I don't, I don't have any worries for it. You know, like I said, people throw this word around, being civil. We're being real civil. Kind of reminds me about, you know, Dr. King, when he was sitting in the Birmingham Jail, and folks told him to quit talking about it, quit pressing that stuff, just be civil. You know, and these were pastors that were telling him that. We're being real civil. Because nobody's arguing, nobody's debating, nobody's having the discussion that takes place in a horseshoe like this when you form policy. But the whole time, we're being civil. Some people are losing their homes, possibly even losing their lives, and definitely losing hope in this city because we sit and we do nothing. You know? Each one of us is one of, is one vote, but collectively, we speak for, you know, the constituents that we represent. I just hope that sometime soon, we could come together just to address the issues. If it's no, at least we'll have the facts, and we could tell them no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else coming before council? Seeing no objections, we are adjourned.
This concludes the live broadcast of Akron City Council. Margot Somerville, President of Council, presides.